Good evening, everybody. Hold order the council meeting in March seven, two thousand and twenty-three. If anyone attending this meeting needs amplifying headphones, please let us know and we'll bring them to you. All right, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, Councilmember Boden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell is absent this evening, and we have Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
We have a motion to excuse Councilmember McDowell. So.
Second.
Right, we have a motion in the second to excuse Councilmember McDowell. All in favor say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda tonight? Or city manager?
I do have a late change, Mr. Mayor. We have discussed surplus of a nineteen ninety-six pickup truck. And I'd like to put that on your action agenda as the last item, E six, if that is okay with council.
Yep, yep, right. Any other late changes? Council, have any board reports to share? I'm one to talk about the cemetery wanting a council member on their board. Can you do that now? Would you see anybody interested?
I think we can do that at new business at the end.
Okay, yeah. All right, has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda? Yes, maybe we have a motion. Move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Tonight, Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about water reservoir storage options.
Good evening, Mayor. Happy to be here, Council. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. Tonight, I have a little different twist on water. We're looking at a water reservoir storage option study. And right now, we have five storage reservoirs. We have the Angle Side Reservoir built nineteen sixty-seven. It's a half a million gallons. It's up on the hill up there. Mountain View Reservoir nineteen seventy-two point six one million gallons. High School Reservoir built nineteen fifty, half a million gallons. Capitol Hill nineteen fifty-four. It's point two two, two hundred and twenty thousand gallons, a little smaller. Upper Mountain View is our latest reservoir is point four one million gallons. Out of all the reservoirs, the Upper Mountain View is the only one that's seismic capable. It's a newer reservoir. When the earthquake hits, the water moves around in there and they'll topple over. So, but a few of these older reservoirs is interesting. I was thinking about that. What was the largest earthquake, do you think, that has hit here in the last seventy-three years? It's a good question, but obviously the older reservoirs have made it through it, but they're not bolted down well. So we got a lot of looking to do. So we, the draft comprehensive plan that we're just finishing up shows that we're deficient in reservoir storage. The two thousand and eighteen International Fire Code is what we've adopted. And so it changed some of the requirements for the actual storage we need to hold. It used to be seven hundred and fifty gallons a minute for residential zones, now it's a thousand and that sort of thing. So on paper, we're a little light in the reservoirs. So we need to get that figured out. So a couple of the master plan projects is to pull, take out the dead storage from the existing Angle Side Reservoir that's been talked about with past commissions and council. We need to continue finishing those improvements up there. The Mountain View Reservoir also has quite a bit of dead storage in it that needs to be removed. Last council meeting, I discussed what dead storage was, and it's basically the houses are at the same elevation as the reservoir. You can't drop it very low or else the houses nearby run out of pressure. So we need to remove that dead storage. There's a second Angle Side Reservoir, a half a million gallons in the plan. A second Mountain View Reservoir at three quarters of a million gallon. Shelton Hills constructing a point four one million gallon reservoir. And then there's supposed to be another Upper Mountain View Reservoir at point four one million gallons. So sitting back, come from another city, we had twelve million gallons of storage in three reservoirs, double the population. I'm looking at all these little tiny reservoirs, thinking our O and M costs are high. We have very old reservoirs. We don't have, they're not seismically capable. So it's time to really look at the system. Combined with the potential, the port and their system, we're going to look to see what happens if we connect it in there well, and they have a couple of reservoirs also. To sort of look at the system in a more holistic manner, maybe put in some larger storage over time and pipe some water around a little better. But eliminate some of the smaller, especially the older reservoirs. So the bottom line is, there's a resolution here for you tonight for BHC consultants to do a reservoir option study for us for seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then I will be bringing the report back to council to tell you what they found out and what some of the recommendations are. And then future planning, we would be working on, you know, moving our way probably from smaller stuff to bigger reservoirs. Things are definitely more seismic resilient because the Cascades Seduction Zone earthquake is out there, right? We can't forget about it. That's it. That's the end of my presentation tonight.
Donna, has anyone sent in for public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
I move to place resolution number one two six five dash zero two two three on the March twenty-first council meeting action agenda for further consideration.
Right, comments or questions?
Question? Jay, you said O and M costs are getting more expensive. What particularly with emergency infrastructure is, are you talking about?
Yeah, great question. So high school tank, outside coating. I don't know if you cruised by there before. That tank was coated fifteen years ago, okay? The coating outside's having a problem. We're sending some divers in in the next few months to look at all the insides of our tanks. And they also look for obviously interior rust, you know, peeling paint. They also clean the reservoirs at the same time. We do get a little bit of sediment. We do it every couple of years. And they vacuum out the sediment at the same time. So deferred, I'm worried about the bottoms of the tank. They sit on the ground. It's likely the high school reservoir was built on a coconut mat or a jute mat. And they put them on concrete now and protect the bases a little better, but I'm worried about the base thickness on that one. Also, the overflow pipe on the high school reservoir is not competent. So if it overflows, it's going to be washing onto the slope, which is somewhat rock lined. It's not a big deal. But we got that going on. We got the painting going on. The Capitol Hill tank is older. And we don't ever really turn the water over in that tank. There's just not enough people up there. It's really not a good candidate to keep long term. We're better off bringing water in from a higher zone and maybe stepping it down is one of the ideas and taking that two hundred thousand gallon tank offline. But the metal tanks, you're saddled with significant recoding costs. The Department of Health is really concerned about the inside of the tanks, not as much on the outside. That's more of a pretty thing, but eventually we'll get rusting from the outside in. So metal tanks older, the costs go up considerably. Also, probably if we decide we're going to keep a few of these older tanks, we probably should do a seismic retrofit on them also. You know, do a recoding if needed, seismic retrofit of the tank to make sure that it's bolted down. So if an earthquake does hit, that hopefully the tank will still be there. Also isolation valves, you asked a question, so I'm hitting you. In an earthquake, they have newer valves that they'll shut the reservoir off. Very likely, the piping system breaks. The slide gates go down, shut the reservoir off. It's isolated. We keep the water for drinking, right? For fire protection, if we can get lines to the fire that are competent, but we don't let the tanks run dry, right? That we, the people need drinking water, right? And part of the town might be on fire, and it's a really tough decision to make. It's one of those things when you're in an emergency operations center and drills that you always practice that one. What decision do you make? You know, is it drinking water keeping for the people or is everyone out of the structures and the town's on fire, right? The very difficult decision to make. So anyways, the right answer is save the water for the people. If you know you're not going to have a long-term water source, because you know, we can get a month out of the reservoir storage, just per gallon a day a person, right? So interesting conversations, but deferred maintenance more on the high school tank. The Angle Side Tank was painted all about ten years ago, eight years ago. It's looking pretty good. Capitol Hills aren't looking that bad either. Mountain View is not looking too bad. It's starting to show some exterior rust, and Upper Mountain View doesn't need any because it's a newer tank.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion in the second to place resolution number one two six five dash zero two two three on March twenty-first council meeting and action agenda for the further consideration. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, next, Senior Planner Jason Bill. Information for us about Peacock Ridge, Ridge Annexation Request.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Hope you'll indulge me. I'm sucking on a cough drop rather than cough into the mic. We came before the council in early February for public hearing to consider annexation of three hundred and seventy acres of property located above referred to as Peacock Ridge, located above the college. Generally speaking, it's to the north and east of Terrace Heights, to the, generally speaking, to the south and east of Hiawatha subdivision, just to give you context of location. We held the public hearing, received a lot of public interest, a lot of, a lot of public comments that mostly related to future development of the property, not necessarily the annexation itself. And no development is proposed at this time. We don't have a project in. But it did avail us the opportunity to send out a list of frequently asked questions, I guess we called them. And basically, it just addressed a lot of the questions we heard at the, at the public hearing, you know, who's going to pay for infrastructure? How does the city review projects? Are we aware there are wetlands on the site and the creeks and the steep slopes? And, you know, generally speaking, the answer is yes. We're aware of these things. The developer in the future would pay for the infrastructure improvements. That's street storm water, water, sewer, parks, you name it. Before the council was to take action on February twenty-first, it came to our attention that, that a couple of property owners were missed. So we held back staff's recommendation to council was to hold off, correct the mailing issue. We, we sent out the mailer to all parties within three hundred feet a second time, which included an additional approximately dozen people. I think eleven property owners were missed on the initial mailer. That mailing didn't result in any significant contacts. I did receive one contact from one property owner. Surprisingly, he was interested in attaching his property to the annexation request, but I explained to him, you know, we've kind of moved past that point. We are going to be doing our comprehensive plan update in the, in the near term, over the next couple of years. That might be a good opportunity if he did want to tack on. And he seemed happy with that. That said, we are recommending that the council adopt ordinance one nine nine eight, one two 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 that would officially annex that property under its current zoning neighborhood residential into city limits.
Thank you. Donna, do we have any public comment on this issue?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Then we have a reading of ordinance number one nine nine eight dash one two two two.
Ordinance number one nine nine eight dash one two two two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, annexing certain property located within the City of Shelton Urban Growth Area into the City of Shelton Corporate Limits.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
We have a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance number one nine nine eight dash one two 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 as presented. Second.
Comments or questions? Right. We have a motion in the second to adopt ordinance number one nine nine eight dash one two 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 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, Community and Economic Development Director Jay Hill has details for us about a rooming house ordinance.
Again, I'll be taking this one. Director Hill is unable to attend this evening. At the February seventh meeting, the council held a hearing speaking to rooming and boarding houses. We have the use identified in our code, but we, it's, it's kind of nebulous as to where exactly it would be allowed. It is a residential use. It's a somewhat common residential use historically. But there is nowhere in the code where it specifically enumerates what zones it would be allowed in, whether we require a conditional use permit, would it not be allowed in certain zones? This action simply proposes to solidify that in the code. Add that a conditional use of permitted degree required for rooms and houses in the neighborhood residential zone and in our general commercial zones. It would allow it within many of our mixed-use zones and then not allow it in our industrial zones, essentially. And we're looking for the council to hopefully adopt ordinance one nine 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 dash one two 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 that would get this change into the municipal code.
Thank you. We have any public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We have Terry Drexler.
Good evenings, council members. My name is Terry Drexler for the record. This is a vital, vital, vital change in your ordinance for our transitional housing project. Prior to recently, Jason, Mr. Doze had written a letter saying, confirming that our transitional housing use was, wasn't allowed use in the zoning of the downtown district. And then he took a look, once we got our preliminary design done, he goes, oh, this isn't what we thought it was. So this is vital for us to continue on with our project. I really appreciate Mr. Hill's work on this and his creativity of finding that you had had this, this type of use in your code already and to be able to allow it in the zoning district of multifamily or of downtown is, is absolutely essential. And so very strongly encourage, and I also thank you for not having a special use permit requirement for the downtown zone as well. Because, gosh darn it, I don't want to do any more of that kind of stuff. So thank you very much for your consideration of this, and I hope, I hope that you'll vote yes.
Any other public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we have a reading of ordinance number one nine 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 dash one two two two.
Ordinance number one nine 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 dash one two two two. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending section two zero point zero six point zero three zero of the Shelton Municipal Code related to rooming houses.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number one nine 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 dash one two two two.
Second.
All right, comments or question? Nope. Yes. We have a motion in the second to adopt ordinance number one nine 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 dash one two two two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Right, Public Works Superintendent Brent Armstrong has information for us about purchasing an asphalt patch truck.
Good evening, Council. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. Brent is not here, obviously. Asphalt patch truck. Our current truck is twenty-six years old. We're proposing to replace it with a pro patch truck that has a lot more capabilities. We demoed the truck and it's night and day between being able to take the asphalt out of the back hopper and redirect it to where you need to put it, which saves guys' backs to having jackhammers that are hydraulically driven and saws to cut concrete and asphalt right on the back of the truck. They wheel right off the back. On the side of the truck has a thing that lifts that you can put the cobble in and it picks it up for you. That tack is onboard, which is a hot asphaltic emulsion that we use to spray down, you know, after, after the hole is prepped. And then obviously, the hot mix is in it. The hot mix is good in the hopper for up to three days, which is really good. Unless the power goes out, right? Then if you have problems the next morning, right? They also have a gas, a propane-powered version of that as another backup. So that's good. So the budget request this year is for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the EM and R fund to purchase a pro patch asphalt truck.
All right, will we public comment, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we have a reading of resolution number one two six zero dash zero one two three.
Resolution number one two six zero dash zero one two three. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign purchase orders for the acquisition of a new patch truck with attachments.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number one two six zero dash zero one two three as presented.
Right, comments or questions?
Please.
Sorry. Comments or question?
Oh, I have a comment. I want to thank you, Jay and Brent for, on behalf of every city council member everywhere, that we are going to have a more efficient way to fix problems. Thank you so much.
Oh, there was no changes from the last meeting to the resolution. I forgot to mention that. No, this is well-needed. It really takes us from a multi-person operation. It's actually going to save on people and time. Then we also are doing it once and doing it right with this new machine. Right now, they sort of hump in the mix and then roll it out. We're going to actually cut the edges and get it laid down in there correctly.
So twenty-six-year-old truck was twentieth-century technology.
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I passed it the other day. It's kind of scary looking.
Got it. So we need you guys out helping us, okay?
Right, any other comments or questions?
I have a quick question. And then that's just going to be utilized for, for like road patches and things. Is this something that we're going to be able to offer assistance to people if they're running in a new water line? Are we going to be able, as the city, help them out by redoing a patch like that?
If we're doing the water line and we do our patching, yes. But in terms of for the private development and that sort of thing, no, because I can't gift public funds to people like that.
Oh, you can't even charge?
It could be considered.
We have such capabilities now.
We could have the capability, you know, that the patch truck is good for smaller areas. It's not as good for larger areas, right? So it all depends on the size of the project.
The smaller areas, just, I mean, a water patch is a few feet wide. Talking like you've got people that you have, that have to put in sidewalks, but then they have to marry the asphalt to the sidewalk, which is normally just
It's potential. I'll talk to the street crew about that and the water crew about that.
Just it takes a lot off of somebody, especially a small developer or somebody like that, just. We have, we have, we have pretty awesome capabilities now, probably better than anybody in town.
It's similar to the county. They have the same truck.
I, I mean, like the private companies even, because I see most of theirs.
Yeah.
They're not that nice.
For smaller patchwork, we have nicer equipment. We obviously can't compete with the bigger pavies and stuff. Okay.
Right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have motion in the second to adopt resolution number one two six zero dash zero one two three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. We have another item from Jay.
Yes.
Brent.
So camera van.
Where is? I'm lost. There it is. No. Oh. But normally it's blue. Go ahead. Yeah, I just lost it because it wasn't.
So the camera van, interesting thing, I started three years ago here and we were out doing some videotaping of our system with our decades-old camera truck. And it failed. We couldn't do videos anymore. Got the camera fixed, but then the hard drive in there was done. The, everything was wrong in there. The generator wouldn't run, no air conditioning. We had to send the truck out, the chassis to get service and anyways, I said, you guys, why are we running something twenty-something years old with really legacy dinosaur equipment in it? So we're able, we got lucky. We sent it down. I think it was Grants Pass is where this truck comes out of. And they had a bunch of dinosaur bones in some containers there, and they were able to take our dinosaur and keep it alive, but they said, this is it. We have no parts left for this thing. That's how old it is. So I said, Brent, we need to ramp this thing up for replacement. The reason is, is it's imperative that we videotape all our sewer lines usually every five years. We're looking for roots, cracks, that sort of things, ladders that have extended too far in. Because in the sewer main, that's where stuff gets caught. You get it plugged, it backs up, you know, can flood, flood a structure or come out onto the street, that sort of thing. A storm system with our new phase two permit, we have to videotape all the lines and inspect the system. So it's going to be used quite a bit on with the new storm system requirements also. Even better yet, with our technology, we're going to have better technology with the camera truck, way better. The enterprise asset management module that we purchased from Tyler and that kicks off here in a few weeks, I think. We have our first meeting on that. The EAM module uploads the videos from the video truck and puts them right on the assets that are in GIS. So we can go back and sit at a console and any staff member can go review a line. So if someone wants to know where their lateral is, we're going to be able to tell you without having to even send out the camera truck. Right now, we can't even save anything off the video truck. It's pretty bad. So we're living on borrowed time with it. And we budgeted two hundred and fifty-seven thousand from the storm and sewer funds for the project. And there's been no changes since the last presentation.
All right, will we public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
And maybe I have a reading of the resolution number one two six one dash zero one two three.
Resolution number one two six one dash zero one two three. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase order for the acquisition of a camera van.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to a resolution or one two six one dash zero one two three as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in the second to adopt resolution number one two six one dash zero one two three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about Angle Side Pressure Zone.
We're busy right now. Last one, I promise, okay? And I'll be quick on this one. Angle Side Tank is four hundred and eighty thousand gallons, built in nineteen sixty-seven. Lot of houses, lot of dead storage. The houses are built up at about the same elevation. We need to increase the reservoir storage there. The dead storage should be pretty easy to go grab. We have BHC consultants that's going to look at the whole pressure zone up there. It's actually quite a bit larger. It goes all the way out to Lake Boulevard. Those are the people around two ninety to three oh five on contour elevation. It's, it's a whole larger zone that we really need to spend some time looking at. That's what this pre-design report will do. We will get it to the state, get it approved. And then with the pre-design report, we'll know how to budget projects. So the Dead Storage Project is one of them. Also, the comprehensive plan calls for a new tank also to be built up there. But we need to know where the high-pressure lines go, where a new tank could possibly go, or a couple of locations potentially. So BHC gave us proposal for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred dollars to complete this pre-design report. Then there's been no changes to the resolution since the last meeting.
All right. Public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, maybe you have a reading of resolution one two six three dash zero one two three.
Resolution number one two six three dash zero one two three. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign the work order with BHC Consultants LLC for a pre-design report for the Angle Side Water Pressure Zone.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt resolution number one two six three dash zero one two three as presented.
All right, comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in the second to adopt resolution number one two six three dash zero one two three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, we're at our late change agenda. The surplus can be important.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Several weeks ago, the Shelton Cemetery District contacted the city and their truck that they use to haul various materials around the cemetery was failing, about to fall apart and had a repair bill that was worth more than the vehicle. So they approached the city and asked if we had any surplus vehicles or any way that we might be able to help them continue to conduct the work of the cemetery district. We did a search, looked around, see what we had, and it turns out that we have a nineteen ninety-six Ford F-150, long bed with nearly a hundred thousand miles on it that the Public Works Department no longer uses and doesn't see any future need for. And we would like to surplus that and then sell that at fair market value to the cemetery district with council's approval for surplus. We provided you tonight with the surplus policy along with the resolution for surplusing the vehicle, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone set a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience want to comment on this since it was a late ad? All right. Maybe a reading of resolution number one two six six dash zero three two three.
Resolution number one two six six dash zero three two three. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, declaring a certain city-owned EMNR vehicle surplus and authorizing its sale as provided by law and city policy.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we waive the three touch rule and approve the resolution number one two six six dash zero three two three as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Correct. We have a motion to second to waive the three touch rule and approve resolution number one two six six dash zero three two three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Yeah, we have a city manager report.
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council members. Couple of things I wanted to point out to you this evening. First, the Financial Sustainability Task Force that you authorized and is continuing their work. They're looking at very apartments throughout the city. I had a presentation yesterday, I believe, from our Public Works Department regarding these funds, the water funds, sewer fund, including general fund components, which we're all focused on. I've been doing a lot of work, a lot of information, and I'm very happy that they are digging in and looking at how we can create efficiencies, not only for twenty twenty four, which as we've been mentioning for several years will be a challenge, but also into the future. If we want to fix this, I think Jay mentioned earlier about the asphalt patch truck, you know, do it once, do it right. So you don't have to keep going back and doing it over and over and over again. So that work is continuing, and I think you'll see some great recommendations out of that. We found we were notified today by a resident and posted on social media immediately about it that there is a spoof website that is capturing some residents for utility billing payments. As a reminder, our domain is sheltonwad.gov. The spoof website has a lot, uses our logo, uses similar telephone numbers and everything else. So I just caution residents to be extremely careful about who you're working with. We want to make sure if we can get the information out there that nobody gets scammed. They're getting rather sophisticated. This one caught me off guard. It looked exactly like our website. So be very careful who you're who you're paying when you're taking a look at them. Lastly. Well, not lastly, go over your looking ahead. So on March fourteenth, next Tuesday, you're going to have a discussion with Community Development Department about housing options. You'll be looking at potential to increase housing stock within city limits, including multifamily tax exemption programs, both eight and twelve year, along with a couple of other items, including inclusionary zoning, which is a tool several communities around the state have used to increase their housing stock within their within their communities. Lastly, I did want to mention that there's been some social media chatter surrounding my job as city manager and I wanted to make sure that everybody had the actual factual information directly from me. Especially the team here at Shelton, because the rumor mill affects everybody and affects everybody differently, and we want to make sure that everybody knows exactly what's going on. So I have been offered another city manager position and I have accepted that position. My last day in the office will be March thirty first. That's a Friday. However, my contract requires I provide you with thirty days notice, but as you all know, I've had a long standing plans for a vacation out of the country. April third to April fourteenth. I will still be taking advantage of that vacation. So it's it's bittersweet. I really enjoyed my time here and I can tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity to work with council to address some of the issues that you wanted us to address. Infrastructure, number one, you've heard a lot of things tonight about water, but the same applies to sewer. And there has been unfortunately, long-term disinvestment in some of the infrastructure projects. A perfect example of that is the water line that we replaced on railroad several months ago where we had to go down quite a ways in order to shut the water off because a valve that was put in under the street in the nineteen forties failed and we had to go down and replace, you know, go to another valve that worked, which caused a wider shut off area. But those are the kind of things that will happen if continued lack of investment in those infrastructure pieces continues to occur. So just tying that back into the Financial Sustainability Task Force, they will produce those recommendations and I would recommend that you hear what those recommendations are because it really is about the future. It's much more cost effective to the taxpayer to do it the right way upfront and not wait until something fails. It's easier to to address it now than to fix it. I think the quote that I like to apply, and I can't even remember who said it, but it's either the pain of discipline or the pain of regret. So that's what that's what I think the the community, the choices of the community are facing. I will be talking to each of you. The city clerk, Donna, is setting up appointments or trying to schedule appointments for each of you so I can make recommendations about what you do in the coming months. And looking forward to those conversations. And we'll have more information at your next regular business meeting on the twenty first. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure questions. Do we have an interim already or no?
That's up for council to decide and will be part of the discussions that that will take place coming up.
Perfect.
I just want to make two comments. One is thank you for your leadership for the city for the past few years and everyone in the city and the city departments I've talked to, just look up to you and I've seen it in action, how you are an outstanding leader, lead by example. And also how quickly that you bring everybody together and that we come up with solutions right away. And just for example, we needed a DCR, you brought a leadership team together. We brought the housing task force together and we got a DCR. And we and then we, as a council, passed the three touch rule and we got one the next day. And so I just want to say thank you for your hard work for the city and have your landings.
Thank you.
Congrats. We're going to have public comment in a second. I'm not saying bye yet, so we'll wait. We have lots of time to.
We got a lot to talk about accomplishments.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic. Donna, do you have anyone interested in making public comment tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first comment is from Dean Jewitt.
Dean Jewitt, lifetime Mesa County community member. Appreciate being able to be here. A couple of weeks ago, I kind of threw out a challenge to all of you guys to do a little bit of homework and have some conversations with some businesses without survey type situations and see what is the general feeling that you're getting with some of the stuff that we have going on downtown? Obviously, you can't answer me with those. It should be nice, nice to get an answer to an email or conversation to find out, who'd you talk to? What did they say? Where are we at? Maybe I am, you know, out on an island. Maybe I'm not. We have a lot of stuff going on in Shelton. We've had several dumpster fires. We've had arsons. We've had murders. We've had shootings. We've got an increase in crime. We have an increase in a street population. We've got an increase in garbage. Alco is being taken over, defecation, urination, all of the above. What I don't really like to see is that is becoming the norm. Five years ago, ten years ago, that wasn't the norm. So now a lot of times you see something and you walk right on by it like it doesn't even matter. We wouldn't have done that five years ago, ten years ago. I've actually tried it myself. I start shaking. I can't do it. Okay, I'm not going to do it. I'm going to bring it to your attention. I would hope that you guys do the same when you see it. If you don't, I would love to give you a field trip on some of the trips that I take. Free of charge. You know, no charge. I'll even buy you a copy. Okay. Garbage collection. Even though this isn't my kind of beer, this is one of probably a hundred and eighty seven visual articles that that I collect that are just within our parking lot along with the drug paraphernalia, defecation, urination, toilet paper, you know, feces running down the wall. Okay, those are just, I mean, it's it's insane. I, we, you know, I get threatened. I got threatened today with a big rock and a stick. Okay, I don't really care. You know, you're going to bring it at me? Well, go for it. But I don't like to do it. I don't want to do it. Why should I be forced into that? I have a feeling that 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 part of that that happens is somewhat the leadership's responsibility that puts the citizens in those situations to begin with. I cleaned up an area, an ALCO, very nice lady shop, and I cleaned it all up for her. The lady across the street from the other nice shop came over and thanked me and said that her customers are scared to even walk around. Obviously, I've got about six more things, but I don't have time. And I'll go ahead and get rid of this for you guys. Thank you.
Right. Anyone else sign up, Donna?
Yes, Susan Kirchhoff is next.
I followed Dean last time. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Susan Kirchhoff, I'm with the Youth Connection. I do want to say thank you, Dean. He actually came and brought us a big bag of black garbage bags. I'm happy to report that we have continued our effort to try to counterbalance some of that. I would challenge you all to go take a look in our alley. It looks amazing. We had four young people out there cleaning today and they all got a gift certificate for it, so they thought that was pretty cool. I do want to say that we spent some time this last week working in the area between the YMCA and the high school. And then we also went through the Huff and Puff and unfortunately, and I say this with a great sadness that we actually found a homeless young person living on the Huff and Puff. The positive is now that we were able to connect them to services with us. So that was a big, huge thing that our garbage collection has been able to do. Both of our centers are doing wonderful in the month of February. We had three hundred and twenty eight visitors to our center. I will say the majority of them are young people. Today alone, we had twenty three people in our center doing wood burning. So I would encourage anyone to be part of the solution. And I do want to say thank you to council members for writing the letter of support for our request to the capital funding budget so that we can get our project done. And thank you for passing the boarding house change because that's going to make a difference in our city. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Monty Ritter.
Oh, you guys, you're the best. Thank you so much for paying attention to me, at least listening to me. My my thinking here is we have a problem. You guys, you guys are really good about this, but a long time ago, when the urban growth area was created, when Clinton passed that Growth Management Act, we as a county had to come up with these little urban growth areas. And that's the way it was. Okay. And back then, Mark Ziegler, I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee. We, I had access to all this information, how the county and the city was going to work together to to create an urban growth area. It was needed back then. It's not needed now. Times have changed. And as we go into this future, we do not need this urban growth area. So when the city is trying to ask those of us who are in the urban growth area to give up our right to annexation because you want to say we have access to your water and sewer? That's not right. If you want to sit there and say that that you can annex our property without our say so, just because we need you for sewer? This, you guys, please do not do this to us. It's it's wrong. And and you should think about this. I've been talking to our county commissioners. We have a hard time with this. I have I have my friends who have houses, their homes are built on pure blocks. Their their houses are worth less than their pressurized mound system sewer systems. If if you guys want to make them, force them to 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 put into a city sewer system, you are, you're killing us. Please don't do this. It's so wrong.
And we. Please don't clap. Please don't clap.
We have one more speaker. Thomas, not sure your last name, Walter, maybe?
Sorry, I'm not.
Okay, thank you. That is it then, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak? All right. Then or, oh, I'm for discussion. Sorry. Other than for discussion. I was approached by the cemetery asking if any of one of us would like to join their cemetery board. And I said I would check if anybody's interested. It's four times a year.
I'll do it.
I will. All right. Now, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March twenty first at six PM. We also have a study session Tuesday, March fourteenth at six PM. This meeting is adjourned at six forty six PM.